Well, good evening, everyone. To our regular city council meeting, June 19th, 2018. If we can get roll call, please. Mayor Dibball. Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Here.
Thank you. We will begin with our invocation led by Councilmember Buckland. And the pledge of allegiance to the flag will be led by one of our Summer at City Hall students, Jose.
Will you bow your heads as I pray? Almighty Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for guidance and a clear vision so all the efforts of staff and council will be of a benefit to those who live and work in this community. It is in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Amen. Ad ad veris to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a packed house today. Just want to welcome all of our Summer at City Hall students. We have a full class this year, and so they are all here today to kind of get the workings of how a city council meeting works. And with that being said, they do have questions for some of the staff. So if you have time, if you can stay after the meeting, that includes our attorney and city manager as well. So if you can stay afterwards to help guide some of those questions that they may have as they prepare for their mock city council meeting for next week. So, thank you. So we're going to start with presentations and proclamations tonight. We have the new hazmat vehicle presentation by Chief Daly.
Mayor Dibball, members of the city council, thank you for joining me tonight as I cover something that we've waited a long time for. I'm going to apologize upfront, I'm getting over a cold. Just got back from vacation. I don't know if it was too much karaoke singing on the ship or what, but my voice is a little rough, so please bear with me. No, I really didn't sing, honest. So, I'm here to talk to you tonight about our new hazardous materials rig that we got. But before I jump into that, I want to stress one thing that I think's pretty unique about our department and about our city, is the state of California provides emergency vehicle equipment throughout the state. It's pretty unique to be able to have one piece of apparatus that the state donates. And you can tell the state equipment from other vehicles is because the state goes with the color green or white. But currently, the California Office of Emergency Services, we actually have, I think we're pretty unique in our department. I know in Northern California, there's not a similar sized department to ours that has three actually pieces of equipment from the state of California. So we actually have a fire engine, which is on the left, which we respond to during times of wildland fire. We have an advanced technical rescue unit on the far right, which has specially trained personnel for an advanced technical rescue team that deals with building collapse, confined space, earthquake, that type stuff, that we can respond, that belongs to the state of California, that they've given to us. And then now we've added our third piece of equipment, which is the newest one, which is the one of 12 hazardous materials units in the state of California that are being delivered this month and next month. So I'm pretty proud to say, our department, we have a lot of people that are specially trained in these areas, and it's pretty unique to see three pieces of equipment from the state of California in one department like ours. So I'm pretty excited about that. So let me go back a little bit so we understand why we have this piece of equipment. We have a team called WISHMRT. That's our acronym for it. It stands for Yuba Sutter Hazard Materials Response Team. And within that team, that team was formed back in 2012, and it's just not Yuba City. We have membership from Beal Air Force Base, from Linda Fire Protection District, Marysville, Oliver, Sutter County, Yuba City Fire, and Yuba County Office of Emergency Services. So there's six agencies that comprise of this team that we formed. We found that's a lot easier if we worked together, instead of having all these separate hazmat teams, instead of each department having their own hazmat team, we combined all these departments to form one large hazmat team. So the way it works is we came back to the council back in 2012, I believe, and asked for permission from the council to form this team through a memorandum of understanding, which you guys approved. And so really, the hierarchy is the councils and the boards on those six departments all approved this memorandum of understanding back in 2012. Below that, we have an administrative group, which is six fire chiefs. So the six fire chiefs sit on the board. I represent, obviously, Yuba City, and we have an OES rep as well. And then below that, we have an operations group, which oversees the team, and then we have the team members themselves. And that's the kind of the hierarchy of the team. There's about 50 team members on the Yuba Sutter Hazard Materials Response Team. Some of the equipment that we have in the area is what we call now hazmat 31, which is the one you saw in the parking lot tonight. That'll be housed in Yuba City. We have Rescue 8 out of Sutter County. We have Marysville hazmat unit, they also have one in Marysville. Linda has a decontamination trailer. Sutter County has a decontamination tent, and then Beal Air Force Base provides specialized equipment for us. The difference between a decontamination trailer and decontamination tent is decontamination trailer is used to decontaminate our own personnel. We actually have a decontamination tent, which is for a large incident where we have a mass casualty, where we can decontaminate large numbers of walking wounded, as well as large amount of non-walking wounded people in the tent. I'm going to talk specifically about the hazmat unit today, because that's the one we received. There's one of 12 in California, we received one of them. There's two of them here in Northern California. The other one is in Susanville, that's hazmat 32. Between those two units, our jurisdiction that we primarily provide cover for is the 13 counties from Yuba and Sutter, basically north to the Oregon border. The value of the vehicle, the purchase of the vehicle from the state of California was about $500,000 plus or minus, just for the vehicle. To kind of give you an idea what the vehicle looks like, on the left is the passenger side, all the different types of compartments and equipment that's carried on it, as well as on the driver's side. You can see some of the equipment there as well. Here's some of the more specialized equipment. All those boxes on the right are just different types of monitoring equipment to monitor different types of hazardous materials. We use those tools to identify what the material is. The one on the left is the most expensive. It's called a spectroscopy, and it's an infrared elite-type system. That alone is $75,000. And that alone, you can literally point it with an infrared light, and it'll identify what the chemical is. It's pretty unique and pretty state-of-the-art equipment. The equipment on the rig is about $300,000. So when you look at the engine and the equipment, it's about an $800,000 investment the state's made. Some of the other features on the vehicle itself, we've got different types of toolboxes, different type of lighting, canopies. We actually have a weather station on there, so we can actually generate, we can figure out our own weather conditions, local weather conditions, right there on the spot with the weather station that we have, as well as specialized tools, non-sparking tools, and things like that, that we need for our team to operate safely. The interior cab is actually a testing lab. There's actually in the back part of the cab, there's places for us for reference documents, computers, printers, books, software, so we can look up different types of chemicals, as well as do some of our testing in a closed environment. If we have to physically take a piece of a sample of a hazardous materials and test it, we can test it right there in a controlled environment through our different testing processes that we use. As far as the training, this is not the typical, this type of unit is not used by all firefighters. It's only used by firefighters that's been specifically trained in hazardous materials. To kind of give you an idea, the training alone, just to be able to put on those funny suits and walk around, is about six weeks of training. Forty hours a week, eight hours a day. So it's about 240 hours of initial training, just to be able to put on those suits and to follow, so we meet all the CalOSHA, FedOSHA guidelines, and all of the NFPA requirement guidelines to be able to be a hazardous materials specialist. On top of that, we send some people to hazardous materials instant commander training, that's another 16 hours of training. And then we also send people to hazardous materials safety officer training, which is about another three days and another 24 hours of training. We're also required to do 24 hours of recertification training every year, just to maintain our license. So we're literally licensed as hazardous materials specialist, and we have to maintain 24 hours of training every year to maintain that license to be CalOSHA compliant. The cost of that training was about, was grant-funded, just the cost to put on the training was about $200,000. So now, if you're adding up the math, we're up to about $1 million the state has purchased so far, to not only fund the vehicle and the equipment, but to provide the training. They also had to pay for us to be able to attend the training, so they had to pay for the overtime and backfill, so that we could send our personnel to the training. That was about another $142,000 amongst the whole team, not just Yuba City, but the team as a whole. So we sent 17 firefighters from our team to this training, which was what was required by the state, to 17 members, as well as we were also able to send another 13 personnel throughout Northern California. They got the training for free, because we could fit 30 people in the class, so we took advantage of getting other departments involved, so they could get the training for free. So it worked out really well. So overall, the state invested in this particular unit to train the people, to purchase the unit, to equip the unit, to train the people, and to house it here in Yuba City. It's about a $1.2 to $1.3 million investment by the state, just for this one unit. So what does the state expect in return, right? Because they're not going to just hand these things out and don't expect things in return, right? What they expect in return is, when the need arises, that they can call us and we'll send that unit with trained personnel. We'll send five personnel with that unit as a minimum. One of them will be hazmat IC certified, that's why we send them to the hazmat IC class, instant commander class, and four hazmat specialists. So they'll respond, those five people will respond with the unit to wherever they're required to go in the state of California. Obviously, our first primary area would be the region, this northern region, but obviously, if they had an earthquake in Southern California, or in the Bay Area where they had hazardous materials incidences, I'm sure we'd respond there as well. The unique thing about this is this is the same mutual aid system that we use for when we send fire engines. So it's the same process. So what happens is, there's no cost to the city, or to this team, when we respond. They cover our cost portal, what we call portal to portal. In other words, from the second that we leave until the second we get back, along with admin fee and workers' comp fees and other things that we have on our contract, all of our costs are covered, so it's revenue neutral for the city, as well as other members and other departments on the team. So the overtime and backfill costs are covered at 100%. The other benefit we have is we don't have to have, we don't have to go out and purchase a hazardous materials unit, because now we have one here in our community. So the state's told us, we can use it as much as we want. So it's free to use. So if we have local incidences that maybe that are smaller, that we need to respond to hazmat unit, but we don't need help from other jurisdictions, we can use it. The only thing they ask is if you use something disposable, you replace it. If you break something, you replace it. That's all they ask. And that's no different than what we're doing right now. Historically, we had an old crew bus, that is what we're using for our hazmat rig. So we'll be able to get rid of that finally. And we had a lot of equipment on there, and that equipment will be shifting over to the new unit. So for us, there's really no additional costs. We're basically getting this new unit, and we just have to replace the equipment that's disposable that we use. We've also been very successful in our team as far as cost recovery. The last two large incidences that the team responded to, we were able to bill the responsible parties, and we were able to receive cost recovery of 100% on both of those incidences. So we've had two major incidences over the last few years where the whole team had to respond, and we were able to recoup our costs. Not only that, but Yuba County's done a really good job. Yuba County OES, they put $5,000 into our fund, and they help us manage all of our funding and cost recovery. That's how Yuba County OES has supported the team. They put $5,000 a year in there to help us towards training and other things that we may need for the team, which is kind of nice. So, that's our new hazmat unit. Total state investment was about $1.2, $1.3 million. We were successful in getting one here. There's only 12 in the state, and we're happy to have it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, we are very lucky to have this. Any questions for Pete?
No questions, but some comments to the mayor. Chief, first, I think it's remarkable that we are able to get different pieces of equipment here through the Office of Emergency Services. And I think most of that is largely due to the successes that our fire department has had with OES at different command situations throughout the state of California. They know that Yuba City is reliable. They know that it's a department that is dedicated, and certainly your service, along with the service of our fire personnel, is recognized statewide. Or they would not have given us, you know, $1.2 million worth of equipment and support in a new piece of equipment. So I think that's remarkable. With that said, I really believe that the community needs to be aware of this, more aware of it, as we move forward, and what those partnerships really look like. So I would really ask the fire department to do some open houses and some other things, possibly, to be able to promote this type of equipment and those relationships. Again, our governor has been notorious in saying, "I'm going to give, you know, control back to the local communities," which meant, "I'm going to take your money away from you." But at the very same time, some of this type of equipment comes back. So I think it's remarkable, it's remarkable what you and the fire department have done to be able to get this type of equipment onboard here in Yuba City. So thank you.
Thank you. And two things I forgot to mention, I apologize. One is, we just found out also that the engine that we do have will be replaced within the next 12 months. We'll actually be getting a brand-new Type III fire engine, the one that was on the first picture I showed you at the beginning. It's that time to replace it. So they'll actually, they notified us, so we'll be getting a brand-new engine within 12 months. That's what they told me. I'm going to hold them to it, but that's what they said. So we'll be getting a new engine. And then also, I just want to acknowledge Bill Fuller, who's here in the audience. He was a lot of behind-the-scenes work on really helping us get this engine and get it in place. So thank you, Bill. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe you can do an outreach, like work with Katie. She's really good at that outreach stuff. I know. See, I mean, you could park it right at New Earth and do the café like you did the last one. That would be awesome. Thanks. So next, we have a presentation for public safety report, with a public safety report from our police, Chief Landon.
Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, Summer at City Hall people. Appreciate you guys being here today. We're going to be doing an open house also, Councilmember Buckland. I will make sure that I have my 2014 Fusion there also, to hybrid. So today, I'm here for the public-
Wait, chief, it's a 14?
Yes, sir.
So you need to wait a couple of years, okay? Let's not be too out front on this.
We are well-equipped at the police department, we get good equipment. I just happen to have an experimental vehicle. We're here today to talk about the police department, a little bit of information about it, background. We want to also tell everybody about our upcoming K-9 event that's coming up Saturday. And I'll have my K-9 team, Sergeant Eschman, Officer Souls, and Officer Gibson. I think Officer Gibson's going to be doing the speaking, he's got the time down pat. And then Community Policing Coordinator Katie Goodson is going to present the council with some presents we have over here, and talk about our trading card and what we're doing to get out in the community a little bit more. So just for some basic background, we'll talk a little bit about our basic structure, calls for service, what a uniform crime reporting Part 1 crimes are, our areas of emphasis for next year, then we'll open it up for any questions. So Yuba City Police Department, we have 64 sworn police officers. By sworn, I mean officers that carry guns, that respond to calls that have the potential of danger, make traffic stops. And then we have an additional 25 civilian positions, which range from dispatchers to community service officers. Currently, we have two open positions for the sworn, and I will tell you right now that the recruiting efforts have been tremendous. We've had, in fact, the mayor helped us with streamlining some of the way that we do the back, or we do the process of hiring. The council supported us with some lateral incentives to bring officers with prior experience by offering some incentives to compete with other agencies. And as a result, we had like 12 down last year at some point in time, and this year we are currently two. If everybody makes it through background, and everybody makes it through the police academy, and we also have a hiring list right now that we are going to fully staff up. So it's looking very good in that respect. We have, the police recruiting team is going to Yuba College on June 30th to talk to their modular academy. Recruiting teams are visiting academies in July. And again, we're doing this in preparation, because we always have attrition rate. Right now, we have two officers that are slated to retire in the very near future, and we want to make sure that we have officers there to replace them. We also have a lateral from Yuba, I probably shouldn't say right now. We have a lateral that's in background. We do 14.65 square miles, is our jurisdiction, we're divided into five different beats. So we try to divide the city equally, so that the calls for service kind of balance out. And they might not be the same size geographically, some calls may demand a greater service, and some might be a smaller service. But we do it in five areas. One officer's assigned to that beat. We have a couple of backup officers in the best-case scenario, then we're augmented by traffic and investigations, community service officers. So this is just some pictures from the 2017 Peace Officer Memorial. One of the things that we're faced with every day is our officers do go out there, and they do put their lives on the line, and sometimes there's consequences for that. So we want to make sure that we never forget, and we always honor them. Right now, we're going to have Community Policing Coordinator Katie Goodson come up and talk for a minute. I just want to show a picture from the National Night Out from last year. There's Katie.
Again, my name is Katie Goodson, and I'm the Community Policing Coordinator here at Yuba City Police Department, and I've been in this position for about a year. And I just wanted to update you guys on what we've been doing, the accomplishments of that position, and how we've been out in the community. So first and foremost, before I run out of time, I'm super excited to announce the completion of our trading card program. Just got it done, got the posters done and framed, and so each of you will receive a framed poster, as well as a set of all the employee cards, so for everyone to see, including the students here. Oops, and it's upside down. So here is the framed poster, and last time we did this was about five years ago, and we had 53 employees participate. This time, it was 78. So I thought that was kind of cool. We had a lot more participation, everyone was super excited. Some more than others, but everybody was really happy to get this done. And at the summer stroll this past Saturday, we did our first, basically, release of them, where we started to hand them out, and had a really positive response. A lot of people looking for a certain officer's cards, wanting to know who they were, what the program was about. Also, this fall, like Chief Landon was saying, we are going to host an open house at the police department, and at that time, we're going to announce the winner of a contest that we're going to have, as far as who can collect the most cards. And this will be ages 0 to 12 years old. Whoever can collect the most cards will be put into a raffle for a prize. So that'll be another incentive for people to engage with the officers, just get to know them, collect their cards. I will make it very clear, though, that they're only to contact the officers when they're not, you know, responding to calls or arresting a subject, you know, when it's safe, maybe at a community event, or something like that. So also, let me set this down. Also, I just wanted to talk about a couple of other community events we have going on. You guys have heard, and mayor announced the last Count Me In for Coffee that we had. The Count Me In for Coffee stands, it's an acronym. The COUNT is Community Outreach, Uniting Our Neighbors Together. So we have those, we try to do it once a month. Since implemented, we've had seven of those at various businesses, such as New Earth Market. This next one's going to be at Steel House Coffee, though. And it's also going to be in the evening. We try to respond to people's requests in the community, like if they say, you know, "Can you have it on a Saturday?" We've done it on a Saturday. "Can you have it in the evening?" The next one, we're going to have on a Monday evening, and that'll be July 16th. So we're really excited about that. That's kind of like coffee with a cop, in case you guys don't know, and maybe some of the students have heard of something like that, where our officers just go out to these locations. We invite the community members to just talk and have coffee and goodies, and just a relaxed atmosphere where people can engage with our personnel, and ask questions, and bring up concerns, and hopefully find resolution. In addition to that, I just wanted to touch on our volunteer program as well. It's still thriving and growing. We currently have 25 volunteers at the police department, and I have approximately five going through the background process right now. So again, that's really great to have such a strong and active volunteer program at the police department. In addition to that, let me look at my little notes here. We also, like I said, the trading card program is completed, so we're going to start bringing those out to the sponsors, the businesses that sponsored cards. Each of them will have a framed poster, like we presented to you guys. And I think, oh, National Night Out, almost forgot that. The first Tuesday of the year is always National, I'm sorry, the first Tuesday of August every year is National Night Out, and it's a nationwide campaign. So that'll be Tuesday, August 7th. We are going to have a briefing at the police department. We invite all of our personnel, as well as the city council, and the fire department gets involved. Locations can register their events through our department, and so we make sure to stop by at these different locations. It's kind of like a big block party, where everybody comes together, expresses their, you know, unification with fighting criminal activity in their neighborhood, getting to know their neighbors, coming up with plans as far as to combat crime from happening in their areas. And we just try to make contact with these neighbors and community members to let them know that we're here, to introduce them to the officers who handle those beats. We make sure to assign certain officers to attend certain locations and events based on where they work and the areas that they're handling on a regular basis. So again, that's Tuesday, August 7th, in the evening time, and we invite everyone to get involved with that, and really to kind of come together as a community. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, Katie, that was July 16th at what time again?
So the next Count Me In for Coffee is July 16th at 6:00 PM, and that's at Steel House Coffee.
Thank you, Katie.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Katie, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Wonderful programs put together.
So last year at National Night Out, the fire department tried to steal our community policing coordinator, and we were able to withstand that. We appreciate that council actually moved the meeting, so they can all attend the National Night Out, because there is a high importance put on there to have the community engagement. And we're very fortunate to have Katie. Last year, we identified a need, and that was getting out in the community more. The council approved that, along with two new community service officers, who we were able to hire and have on the road in December. And the only unfortunate thing is, we just, Lucy Lane just retired tonight, as we're speaking, after 24 years as a community service officer. And she absolutely refused to come up here. She does not like recognition, but I just wanted to point that out. She was a great, she'll be missed. Another National Night Out photo, like I said, everybody gets involved in that, and we get a great response from the community. So my next segue here, or the segue for the next group, is going to be Officer Chris Gibson, Kenny Souls, and Sergeant Eschman, and Gunner's here. We left Fosco in the car for right now, but it is air-conditioned.
And thank you, everybody, for giving me the chance to talk. Again, my name's Chris Gibson. I've been with the police department for about 12 years now, and for the last five years of my life, I've been teamed up with Fosco. So that's been my life, is the K-9 unit. Currently, we only have two dogs, Fosco and Gunner, over here in the corner. Both dogs are apprehension dogs and article dogs. And so basically, our main function right now is we support all the patrol services. So we still go out and we handle all our day-to-day calls for service, frauds, all that fun stuff that everybody wants to be a cop for. We also provide an on-duty presence at our problem areas, at our bars, gang areas, all that sort of stuff. By on-duty presence, I mean you can actually drive through these areas and hear the comments of, "Oh, it's the K-9." And, "No, I don't want to deal with that dog," as you're driving through. So we're actually having effect, just by the simple presence. We also provide on-scene presence, and what I mean by on-scene presence is if we have somebody who's actually threatening to fight, or actually has gone and hid themselves, a lot of times, just by hearing the barking or hearing a K-9 announcement, that person will come forward, and it completely diffuses that situation. Also, if there's any kind of in-progress call, where there's a crime of violence, or you know, potential violence, or the person is fleeing, or anything like that, the K-9 officers are expected to kind of step it up and set perimeter and take charge of that call, until that person is either determined to be gone or located. We also assist a SWAT team. Currently, Kenny and Gunner are the only dog team assigned to the regional SWAT team, which consists of Yuba County and Yuba City. The two of us are available 24/7 for any kind of calls, any kind of, again, anything that's violent pursuits, or anything like that. They'll actually call us at home, and we're expected to respond out to that scene. We also do a lot of agency-assist call-outs. Recently, Yuba County had a shooting, actually had a murder, and they called us out to do an article search, looking for the stolen gun, or for the gun that did the shooting. We'll do a lot of school demos, usually like the Great Classes, or we'll come out and do demos for those, and also for the Citizens Academy. The times that we will use a dog is anytime there's a serious offense, which is usually something of propensity of violence- something of propensity of violence. That person poses an immediate threat to the officers, the handler, or citizens, so again, usually it's just somebody hiding. And when we say, or they're actively resisting. And active resistance for us is that person is actually hiding from us, like they know we're there, and they've decided to hide from us, or they're physically fighting with us, and we need the dog to overcome that. And the whole point of that, of using that dog is, they're primarily a locating tool. If anybody's watched the news, the ambush has become the headline on a regular basis. The dog eliminates that, because he's able to go out and that knows, he can find them, and tell us where they are, and either bite them, or they bark, and let us know where they, that person is. That dog, again, he can safely enter somewhere that we can't go, long hallways across open areas, the dog can do it safely, and you don't have to, you don't have the human resource out in the open and exposed. The dog's act is a force multiplier. I've been present on multiple occasions where we have a crowd that's unmanageable with a number of officers on duty, and the presence of that dog was able to, basically, we consider one dog the equivalent of like ten to fifteen cops, and by that one dog, we're able to defuse a situation and keep it from becoming more serious. Again, the presence of the dog, more often than not, the person will just completely surrender, and that just flat eliminates any use of force, any litigation that could arise from that, injuries to officers, it just goes completely away. And the, again, for surrenders, just to clarify what I mean by a surrender, that is a person who either, flat out, they saw the dog's presence, and they said, hey, I don't want any part of that dog, don't let that dog come out and get me. And maybe we couldn't even use the dog in that particular situation, but they didn't know. The other types of surrenders we talk about are where the person has done a serious offense, they're confronted by the dog, and their options are, you either surrender, or you could be bitten. Currently, between the two dogs, we are right at, or just over, a hundred surrenders between the two dogs. And again, one of those surrenders, a notable surrender for us, was Uba County SO requested assistance. They had a guy hiding in an attic. He had a couple felony warrants, was known for drug trafficking, firearms history, and it was a crime of violence that he'd just done. I think he was one of four, currently wanted for hit-and-run with serious bodily injury, and he'd previously been taken into custody by the feds for firearms possession. Well, they hear this guy in the attic, they know he's in the attic, the family told him he's in the attic, and he still won't come out. Well, the deputies made the decision, they were going to go in, and they were going to arrest him. So there was gonna be a confrontation, where they were gonna have to come through a small space in order to confront this guy, who knew they were there and was hiding. Fosco and I get on scene, I make several announcements, there's no reply, so I have Fosco bark. When he barked, the guy yells out, hey, let me see my kids first. It's a couple days before Christmas. And so we gotta negotiate back and forth, and hey, you guys gonna let him see his kids? Yeah, we'll let him see his kids. All right, we'll let you see your kids, come on out. He comes out, he looks down, sees Fosco, and started crying, which is weird. I've never had that happen before. So they take him into custody, and they go up expecting to find large cache of drugs. But what they actually found was that he had gone all the way to the back of the attic, barricaded himself behind some boxes, left a small hole, and buried himself in the insulation, was laying there with a gun, waiting for us. So that particular day, had Fosco not been there, one of those deputies, or the suspect, or any number of things, they could have wound up dead out of that, and that dog just flat, his presence diffused that situation. So anyway, so there's that. Our canine trial, that everybody's been talking about, it's as community-oriented as you can get. We're trying to get, it's really a public safety fair. So if you guys are able to come out on the 23rd, it's this coming Saturday, we're actually starting at eight. If you can come out, you'll get to see the dogs in action, they'll do some protection stuff, where they bite the suit and let go, and some search phase, and agility, all that kind of cool stuff. And I think we're gonna have the fire department there, the sheriff's department, a few armored cars and stuff, and bounce houses, just so everybody can get out and they can see that we're people, too. And with that, if you guys have any questions, I'm glad to field any questions.
Can you tell everybody where that's gonna take place?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, right across the street, at the church across the street, at Civic Center Field, and at the Latter Day Saints Church, right across from City Hall.
Through the mayor, just, how many canines have we actually had through the years with Uba City?
We've had a grand total of five, that I know of. Six, six, yeah, we've had six dogs.
I know that in the past, they've been pretty accomplished through the, I guess, the canine, I'm gonna call it Olympics, in the testing that they've done. They've done pretty well, and very obedient, and very responsive. How are these two we got right now faring along that?
Last year, in the Western States Police Canine Association, there's several, there's over a hundred dogs that compete in this thing throughout the year. Kenny and I, with our dogs, we took top team out of the state, so, first, out of the state. And Fosco and I took second out of all the teams in the state, and Kenny placed fifth out of everybody.
That's fantastic.
That's awesome.
I know one's a little more energetic than the other one, so I
He is.
I think he's having to be in the car because of that.
Yeah, yeah, he's a little rambunctious for this. All right, thank you.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Kenny wanted me to mention that most departments our size have more dogs.
He qualifies.
It's just a subtle hint.
We're really happy with, I think we do have the two best handlers in the state, and two of the best dogs, so we're very appreciative of all the work they put in, way beyond a normal eight-to-five or ten-hour day, they have to put in a significant amount of time. And if you can see Gunner, can you walk Gunner through? I know a lot of you guys didn't get to see him earlier.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to show off a little bit, and bring them out today, and just show off some of the people that we have, because they are behind the scenes, Katie, and, well, not so much Katie, she does the social media, too. But the canines, for sure, and we wanted to make sure that people got to know who Katie was.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I'm gonna go through real quickly on the rest of the stuff here, because I know we're taking up a lot of time.
Rob, just really quick, just so the students know, the dogs actually go home with you, right? So, I mean, they are partnered with you, so just for students' information, I mean, they are part of the family.
Absolutely, and I know you guys had a chance to do a walkthrough most, well, you all did, actually, but I forgot, and I gave it to you, but I forgot to point out the canine wall. So if you didn't see it, there actually is a memoriam to each dog that has ever been a canine at Uba City Police Department. So they are our officers also, and we want to make sure that they're always remembered. So I'll go through this rather quickly. I think I'm going backwards, though.
Yeah.
Sorry, I probably slowed down time for you. So our top calls for service, number one, alarm calls, suspicious calls. Down at the bottom, you'll see transient calls. A lot of the transient calls, we're seeing a rise in them, and it's also tied into welfare checks. So even though it's a welfare check, a lot of those are for transients that we're dealing with right now. Two thousand seventeen, Part One Crimes. I would've given the presentation earlier in the year, but we had some hiccups along the way, so I'm gonna start out with two thousand sixteen to seventeen. We track all Part One crimes, which means major, whether, the major felonies, whether it's a burglary, a rape, a homicide, a larceny, a motor vehicle theft, and we track it exactly like every other agency in the United States does. Then we port our statistics to the FBI, so they can track them. So from two thousand sixteen to seventeen, our biggest thing of notability was that our homicide rate, which had been eight the prior year, was zero last year. Our violent crimes went down from two hundred and seventy-two down to two hundred and fifty-five. Unfortunately, the property crimes went up, and we've seen that. In fact, Rachel Rosenbaum, for the Appeal Democrat, did a great article on Proposition Forty-Seven the other day. If you have a chance, you should read that, because that'll tie in why property crime is rising. Contributing factors statewide, we show the same trend as everybody else in the state, essentially, in California. There's property crimes, they're normally going up, violent crimes are going down. So this is statistics for the last three years. This is two thousand fifteen on the far left, two thousand seventeen on the far right. Larceny, which is a type of a theft, we've had a steady increase in. Burglaries, which is basically entering somebody's house or vehicle, or store, or commercial business, has dropped from four twenty-nine to three eighty. Our motor vehicle thefts, you'll see, is the most significant increase over the last three years. We're working with all our, everybody in the region are showing the same pattern, so we're working very closely with CHP. We just did a big sweep of all the people on probation, it was very productive, and making a lot of significant arrests and turning up leads for the future. Aggravated assaults, it's kind of held steady. Robberies has kind of held steady, it's a slight increase. Rapes have gone down, and homicides, again, it went from zero to eight, back down to zero. So that's from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Now, looking at a comparison from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, from January first through May thirty-first, so we're comparing the same timeframe, different years, you'll see that larceny thefts have actually gone down this year. Burglaries have gone down, motor vehicle thefts have gone down significantly, aggravated assaults have gone up, robberies have stayed about the same, rapes have stayed about the same, and homicides are also at zero right now. Net five, a lot of numbers up there, you can glance at that if you'd like to, but the big thing that we're seeing is methamphetamine is staying about the same. We've seen a dramatic increase in heroin, and cocaine, I think, was about the same. Commander, or Assistant Chief Garcia's back in the room, do you have anything to add?
No, that's accurate.
Okay. He told that to me, so I knew it was. Basically, investigations, normally, we have six detectives, or seven. So as we're staffing up right now, we have lots of people in field training. The big areas that we've seen losses in the past, first of all, our first major priorities of the police department is to handle patrol, nine-one-one calls. But, and so when that, when we start to have short staffing, we pull guys out of investigation and traffic, and you'll start to see the enforcement there start to decrease, but right now, we're starting to rise. So our staffing is getting up, we're doing a lot of two-ninety compliance, which is sexual registrants, a couple of human trafficking things, and right now, we're making sure we get out in the public, give human trafficking presentations in the Citizen Academy. And we're still trying to work on a business academy where we can partner up with them. So some of their notable investigations, accomplishments over the past year. And our priorities for two thousand eighteen, again, we're gonna continue on gang suppression, violent crime suppression, net five in gang task force maintenance, we want to make sure that our regional partners are cooperating, we're all working as an alliance together, so we can have a bigger force multiplier. We're gonna continue to look at the realignment Proposition Forty-Seven, which basically means that less people are in prison, which was the goal of the propositions, but unfortunately, the ultimate result is there's more criminals on the street. Continue our volunteer citizens academies, we're looking at the Walton Annex Station, we'll continue to explore that, and we're doing a parking lot expansion, and that's gonna be presented tonight. Some other priorities to maintain our staffing, filling the ancillary positions, traffic enforcement. Councilmember Buckland was a lieutenant with the Uba City Police Department, and his specialty area was traffic. So we want to make sure, and he probably understands that better than anybody in the city. Something that we've noticed, as the officers went down, our enforcement index went down, which means, the reality is, and I know you guys don't like to hear this, but the more tickets you write for hazardous citations, it lowers the amount of injury accidents. So our goal is to write twenty-five, our goal isn't, but the National, the NHTSA says that if you write twenty-five traffic citations for every one property injury accident, that you'll start to see a noticeable decrease in your traffic injury accidents. It's tough to say. So over the years, a couple years ago, it sunk down to about ten-point-eight. Again, remember that twenty-five is ultimate optimum. Last year, it went to thirteen-point-six, which is about a thirty percent increase, and this year, as we've increased, we have more people in traffic school right now, it is up to twenty-point-four. So we've made a very dramatic increase on our traffic index, so for you guys, drive careful, please. We have body-worn cameras, we had an issue with that initially, but now we are gonna have those fully staffed by the end of this year again. And that was just because technology was too fast for everybody in law enforcement, basically. They kept getting better equipment that held too much storage, and ultimately, there were some gaps. So now we think we figured it out. Again, one of our big priorities, clean and safe, we're working with the Sutter County, we're working with the city, we're working with the other counties, and try to see what we can do about getting people that want to be in homes, in homes, people that want to have jobs, we want to get them in that direction, or at least offer them the help. And we understand that we need to be a big part of that. So with recruiting, one of the big things that we've seen as a result, we have a five-thousand-dollar bonus, basically, if you're a lateral officer at another agency, and you want to come over here, we'll give you five-thousand dollars, and then we'll give you fresh uniforms, new uniforms, sick leave, we let you transfer some of that over. There's four, do you remember the other one? Yeah, no, one more. Anyways, we have four good incentives, and I don't have all four of them, I probably do. So this is prior to it, you can see she's, we're out recruiting everybody right now, we want to have some diversity in the workforce. She wasn't too happy initially. We want to, yes, we want to have the diversity, we want to have everybody in there. She wasn't real happy when she found out we didn't have incentives, but then we told her about it, and lo and behold, she's on her track right now to be our next officer. Comparative data, our crime rate is below similar-sized cities in California, we're below the national average. Less than half the crime rate of twenty years ago, still. Property crime rate is trending up, statewide trend is same, and we want to continue to really focus on regional alliances with other agencies. So with that, I will end my presentation and open up for any questions from the council.
Right. You have any questions for Chief?
Through the mayor, I have, I do have one question regarding the alarm, was being on top of the list for answering alarms. How many of those are false alarms?
I think the national average is around ninety-eight, high ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent, lower ninety-nine percent of all of them are false alarms. And we do have an ordinance that will, requires the people that are perpetual or habitual offenders.
Is it somewhere around three, and then you start paying, or is it the third one or something, or?
It is, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, I believe it's three in a year, or a certain amount in a quarter. And then, those are mainly malfunctions due to the homeowner. So if we respond to an accurate one, and just if your house got hit, we don't count that as an alarm, false alarm. But the main problem is people not keeping, taking care of it, and we also hold the alarm companies accountable, too.
User malfunction, too.
Yes, very much.
Had one or two.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Chief, just, and I think just for clarification on traffic enforcement, and I'll just, I'll make the statement is, this is not a process of generating revenue for the city of Uba City. It actually, if you looked at the cost of putting traffic enforcement out and writing a citation, very little of the revenue comes back to the city of Uba City on a traffic violation. Most of it goes to the court administrative costs and to the county. So when you look at the cost-benefit of doing traffic enforcement, and especially trying to reduce injury crashes, the overall benefit is to the community in not having to suffer additional costs when it comes into insurance premiums and things like that throughout the, throughout the year, plus not clogging up our roadways with a bunch of destroyed vehicles. Second to that, you saw the, you saw Gunner acting very, very well in here, and much of that comes from Kenny's wife's training, because as she has trained Kenny, the dog has caught on, Gunner has caught on to exactly what he is supposed to do, and what Gunner is supposed to do. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear, that some of it has to do with Kenny's abilities, but most of it has to do with his wife's abilities, who also works at the police department. And then, third, I want to lodge a complaint, and this is an infringement on some copyright material. Ricky Gerardo, or Gerardo, has a copyright violation that occurred at Linda's Soda Bar in Uba City, and I'm going to lodge a complaint, because because I was the first one that ripped off Norman Rockwell with this whole concept of the runaway. And that was done some 20 years ago. But just so you know, this is not a unique concept. That was done and photographed by a gentleman by the name of Billy Aller. And I was threatened by the Rockwell family as a result of that photograph. And so I think that Ricky will probably be facing the same retribution from the Rockwell dynasty. So, anyway, thank you, Chief. The trading cards are great. If anybody wants a complete version, I took out one duplicate. These are for sale at the end of the, of the evening. Just come see me.
Duly noted on the complaint.
All right. With that, any other comments? No. Great. Thank you so much.
And I wanted to show the outtakes of the trading cards. So also, this gentleman here, we put his picture up here because he absolutely refused to do a trading card, so we're hoping to shame him into it. That's Officer Benny Beecham. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. So next, we're going to go on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. So as far as written requests, I don't believe we have any. No written requests?
None received.
Okay. So as far as appearance for interested citizens, I do have one card here for Phil Trainor. So members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. So Phil, you are on.
First of all, thank you for having me here.
Thank you. Phil, for the record, can you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Philip Trainor, living in Uba City. I come up here about once a year, it seems like. And I'm griping about the same thing every time I come here. So this time, I decided to print out what I thought, hoping that maybe we could straighten out this pension issue. Because one of the reasons I've decided to jump on this again is because I finally found somebody that thinks the same way as I do, Governor Brown. Two weeks ago, came out and made the statements that I've been making since 2004. So I would hope that perhaps the council would maybe set aside a time for the public, to explain to the public what's happening on the pension. Because I am just amazed at the number of people that have no idea what's happened. The city have put out a questionnaire, and I suppose I get these phone calls because the old man generally answers the phone. But people say, what do you think? Well, it's not up to me to think about these things. The county's in bad, county, I've been griping at the county on the same level. This is not just a city issue. And some of you will remember me from the county. But years ago, the county told me to give up on them, go over to the city because they were in worse shape than the county was. So what I'd like you to do is, I would like the county, I would like the council to set aside a date to where the citizens can come in, they can sit here, and we can all decide what's happening, and what are you going to do about it. Because we've been sticking our head in the sand, and nothing has been done. And things are getting worse and worse and worse every year. There's a better word for it. It's worser than it's ever been. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I know that this is not an engendized item, and I'm not going to bring discussion. But what I'm going to say is fairly simple and straightforward. To have continual complaints, or to have some idea that a resolution has been put forward by Governor Brown, is, to me, an indication that there's a lot of misinformation out there. And what is the solution? We can write down what the numbers are all day long, but short of possibly engaging in some type of workshop in the future to discuss where we are and what our legal obligations are regarding pensions is something that needs to be probably discussed in greater length.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request any particular items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for an individual action.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
And I do have a note that our minutes were corrected, and the complete minutes were provided to us. So that would be included with the motion.
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. Okay. General items, we have a purchase of a Boyer breathable air compressor.
Good evening, Mayor Diboll, and members of the city council. Before you tonight is a request to purchase a breathable air compressor with an SCBA fill station for the fire department. This is the machine that we fill our air tanks for the firefighters. We also fill air tanks for the police department, as well as for the utilities department. Our current compressor was purchased in 1999, and is at the end of its usable life. Due to its age and the availability of parts, it's become pretty critical that we get this thing replaced. The last repair required a purchase of a valve from Germany, and it caused the compressor to be out of service for three weeks. Funds for the purchase, for this purchase, were included in this year's capital acquisition budget, but we delayed the bidding process and the purchase until we knew what SCBAs we were going to be purchasing. As you know, we came several months ago to, we had a demonstration for you of the MSA tanks, and we're just about ready to get those things in service. We are recommending that the city purchase a Bauer Unicus III 13-E1 from Bauer Compressors of Livermore, in the amount of $54,228.22, and finding that it's in the best interest of the city to do so. Bauer currently takes care of our compressor. We had been working with different regional companies, but they've all closed up shop, and Bauer is, comes out of the Bay Area. They're a leading manufacturer. Again, they are part of, MSA is a part of Bauer, so we're working with the same compatible equipment. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Back to the council. Do we have a motion here?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Our staff's recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the 2018, 2019 citywide sole source and professional service purchases. Spencer.
Morning, Mayor, or good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Been in my office a long time today. Tonight, I bring before you the citywide sole source and professional services purchases for fiscal year 2018-19. I want to mention, for the benefit of those watching and listening, that the, this item is very serious to staff. It's a little intangible, perhaps, if you're from the outside. But we are, staff in the finance department and throughout the city are very serious about our duty to oversee public funds. And this item tonight is part of that process. With such an important item, there are many opinions about how, how safe, or how far we should go to protect, you know, to oversee these funds. So some of the things that you hear about purchasing and some of the processes might feel a little bureaucratic, but they're absolutely necessary to make sure that we have the level of protection that's, that's called for in this, in this instance.
Thank you.
While there are many vendors included on this list, there is no certainty that all will be used. And the amounts listed are staff's best estimate of total invoices, and may vary if vendors are not already under contract, or only contracted to be used as needed. So how do they get on the list? Sole source is a term commonly used in staff reports to indicate a special circumstance in which the formal bidding of, or quotes process may be dispensed, when in the best interest of the city. For example, sometimes a vendor is the only known provider of what it is we're looking to purchase. Sometimes, we only have one responsive bidder. So we go out and ask statewide, nationwide, for interest in, in our business, but sometimes we will only get one response. Sometimes, we have existing systems in place that were put in place by a certain company that is only license, is the only company licensed to maintain or provide parts or service to that system. In some instances, we have special, a vendor would have specialized knowledge or expertise within a system or other working components in the city. Multi-year agreements and piggyback contracts are often reasons to appear on this report. Staff wants to keep council informed about how we plan to use our budgeted funds. Even though we bought, we brought a five-year agreement before council three years ago, we still want to bring it up annually and let them know that we plan to spend money there. Piggyback contracts are very common in government, where another agency has already done the due process of verifying that it's a, a fair price for a good product and a qualified vendor. And even though staff might piggyback onto another agency's contract for, for a service or a good, we still look, do our research and make sure requesting quotes informally to verify that it's a, it's still a valid purchase or a good price. Some vendors are on this list because they have been successful at providing the low quote so often in the past, that experience tells us that we are likely going to be coming before this council sometime in the spring to request that we spend over $50,000 for this vendor in a year. And I'll provide some examples of that in future slides. So this is the beginning of the list. There are many vendors on this list that we anticipate spending $50,000 or more with this year. The parks maintenance listings under community services that you see are good examples of vendors that are on the list, but will also be earning our business each time we use them through the quote process. But again, this is where our experience tells us that some of these vendors are, are going to succeed in these quotes, and they're going to do it often enough that we'd be coming before council anyway. And so staff put it on this list, so we could present it to council tonight. Computer systems like Spillman, Data 911, and Penimation, which is the financial system for the city, would be very costly to replace and are perennial on this list. They're on this list every single year. Some vendors like Ellen Curtis & Sons, which are used by the fire department, are sole providers of brands the city departments have adopted and wish to continue with to keep items like safety equipment, keep safety equipment uniform, so the same, to reduce maintenance costs. Water meters are another good example. Imagine having five different brands of water meters out in the city, which means we'd have to have five different sets of tools to repair them, and five different manuals to repair them throughout the 15,000 meters in the city. And professional services vendors like Larry Walker &amp; Associates have demonstrated knowledge of our systems and proven the ability to assist staff with utility permits, renewals, and other very important projects. Vendors like Fletcher's Plumbing, for example, are contracted in advance of emergency repairs and specialty equipment needs to ensure the city is not subject to last minute, in the heat of the moment pricing, which would be very costly. So staff's recommendation is to approve the citywide sole source and professional services purchases for fiscal year 2018-19, based on each purchase recommendation being in the best interest of the city.
Right. Thank you. Back to council. Any questions for council or comments, or a motion?
Move to approve the item.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? There you go. Next, we have police department facility expansion project approval of plans. Ben.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Diboll, and members of the council. So the item I have before you is in regards to the authorization to bid of the PD facility expansion project to expand the security area to facilitate additional parking, storage, an area for the K-9, future K-9 facility, and then infrastructure for a future building and solar array system. So, little bit of background, in 2008, we purchased, the city purchased this, this lower section here, about 3.2 acres, for the future expansion of the PD with the intention. And right now, we designated a portion of it as civic center field. And you can see lately, we've been doing a little work out there to make future improvements. And also before you, a while back, we brought an item from Autera for a solar array function, a solar array system to come in, ultimately save power. And so when we did the improvement project, this design, we tried to incorporate some of those elements on how that would affect the field and the solar array system. So a little background, in 1718, the CIP, council authorized funds in the CIP budget to come back, to design a project and, for this facility expansion. Due to limited parking with, with expansion of the city and the department over times, there's just a need for parking. Also provide a secure area for evidence. It's a big, it's a big issue for the police department that those vehicles be, be in a secured site stored when there's, when there's involved with a crime that needs to be handled as evidence. And then also, there's some other elements with the infrastructure for the future buildings and coordinate with the solar array system, and also heavy duty vehicles, some concrete pads to facilitate the SWAT vehicles and other large vehicles that are heavy duty. So, so in short, it's a, it's a facility expansion project, you know, but it has, it's multi-phased with, with an area. So if, on the east side, so basically, if you look at this square in yellow, and you go into it, there's an area on the north for the future building, concrete pad, area for the heavy duty vehicles and storage, future parking and a storage area. Location down here would be as an area reserved for the K-9 area, training facility, and then parking throughout here. So... Well, we contacted, we contracted with a local architect, Bob Estrada. He's worked up the plans and specifications for the project. We're looking at approximately $865,000. We're looking to put it out to bid with your approval, and, and come back late summer with, with recommendations on how to proceed. One of the concerns that we have right now with this project is the bid environment is really tough right now. It's, it's a busy, for small contractors that would work on this type of project with concrete and, and the paving, and the smaller utility. A lot of them, we've heard, are associated with the fires, doing the work associated with the fires down in Santa Rosa, and just a busy economy. So, so there's, so there's thoughts that the bids might come in over, overestimate. And we're, and staff is really trying to identify that now compared to later, for two reasons, is that, we have a couple time-sensitive projects that we're trying to coordinate around, is that the solar array project, in order to move forward with that, because it's under design, is that if this project isn't, isn't, if the facility expansion isn't going to proceed as planned, we want to scale this back or modify it so the, so the solar panel project can move forward with that determined scope. And then additionally, with a civic center field project, there's a need to have the civic center field regrade it and up and running for use for early 2019. And so, so with those... And so with those items that are time-sensitive, we're recommending to put it out to bid now, even with this environment, because we don't know when the bid environment's going to get better. So then at least we could analyze the bid, see what options we have and where they're at. And knock on wood, they come in at estimate, but we know it's a tough bid environment right now. So heads up on that. It's a multi-phased project like we discussed. This project won't include the metal building or the solar, or the K-9 facility, but it does the infrastructure for it. So it puts up the wall, it designates the area, it puts the conduits in, it puts the site basically in place for those to be constructed. And so with that, I'm looking for authorization to put the project out to bid and approve the plans and specifications. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project.
Okay, back to council. Any questions, comments? Have a motion?
To the mayor.
Yeah.
You know, at this point, I think this is a, other than staff time, this is a no harm, no foul venture where we can go out and try to seek what the current economic environment is for this project. I would caution that if this comes in significantly over, that we look at some, either a scale back on the project or we simply look at a more advantageous time to go out and also in the possibility of opening the scope of time for construction might allow for a reduced bid amount. So I would encourage us to look at all the options to try to come in at or just slightly below what the engineers' estimates are on this.
Any other comments?
But with that, I'd move to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next, we have sworn police mid managers LOU, letter of understanding. Natalie.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. Tonight, I am bringing before you the sworn police mid managers letter of understanding. This is the last bargaining unit that I will be bringing forward this year. This is a recently formed bargaining unit. It was recently recognized by you this year in 2018. If we entered into negotiations with them in the last few months. As a result of these negotiations, we have come to an understanding for this letter of understanding. Some of these terms include the one-time distribution of the 1,500 or 2%, whichever is greater. In this case, it would be the 2% for these folks. There is a 5% increase in this LOU. The purpose of the salary 5% increase is to maintain the salary separation between the sergeants in this unit. If you recall, the police sergeants received a 5% incentive pay. And as a result, most of the units, other units, received 2% general. This is a 5%, so there's an additional 3% built in here. We also increased the uniform allowance to $900, and we also will be doing a CalPERS health actuarial. There is interest in this unit to moving to the PORAC. But at this point, the city has only agreed to do the CalPERS actuarial. At this, there's also a supplemental appropriation associated with this letter of understanding. At this time, I will ask, see if you have any questions, and then move for a recommendation to approve this letter of understanding and the supplemental appropriation.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie in council?
Mary, fine. Natalie, how many folks does this apply to?
I'm looking at four.
You're looking at four.
I was going to say five, but I wanted to get verification with Assistant Chief. Garcia is here in the audience, and so I was just looking, he is part of this unit.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. We have business from city council. We do have appointments of boards and commissions. We have the appointment for the regional housing authority. The regional housing authority, by the bylaws, they state that each jurisdiction appoints two members to the housing authority board. One is a city council member and the other is a city appointment. Councilmember Cordoza is our current member who sits on the council as assigned to this, has been assigned to this board. We do have the following recommendation of David Waite, who would, his term would go all the way to December 31st, 2022. So the recommendation is for city council screening, recommendation to move forward with this.
Approve staff's recommendation, the mayor and vice mayor.
All right. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right.
And if Mr. Waite is here, we have a meeting tomorrow at noon.
I don't think he's here.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So now we have council reports. Councilmember Buckland.
Thank you very much, mayor. We had the dedication of our levy repair projects that have gone from Thermalito after Bay all the way down to Star Bend. Just for everybody's information, this is done through an assessment of the property owners in Sutter County. It is in the millions of dollars. In fact, it's in the multiple hundreds of millions of dollars to build to do this project. And it improves the safety throughout Butte County and Sutter County all the way to the south end of Yuba City. When we're talking about how many dollars, it's about $380 million. There's been a tremendous amount of work that has been done on this project. And following the 1955 floods of Yuba City and the loss of life, this is the most significant infrastructure repair that has been done to our levy systems since that time. So there was a dedication that occurred a couple of weeks ago, or about a week and a half ago, down at Shanghai Bend, well attended by members of Congress, members of this council, and members of the Sutter-Butte Flood Control Agency. And we are excited about where this will take us in the future and what ongoing maintenance of these facilities will look like so they don't fall into disrepair as they have in the past. Also attended the Yuba City graduation and also the River Valley High School graduation. A couple, I think, really important things to take away from those graduations are the number of individuals from both of those high schools that have engaged in recruitment efforts with the United States military, the various different branches of our military. And I think it's exciting to see that we still have youth that are that believe that this country is a great country and they can serve at a higher level and certainly have something that they can provide back to this great country. Also, the scholarships that were, that have been handed out in the last couple of months to both of these schools exceed $3 million in school and scholarships for continuing education, both Yuba City High School and RV. I think RV's topped out at about $2 million.
Yeah.
It was amazing to hear these numbers. But I think it's remarkable that our students have an opportunity, whether they choose to go to higher education or simply engage in current workforce development, that they have opportunities that are out in front of them and there are funding opportunities for them. And then the last little bit, we received information on Monday. Probably one of the biggest funding opportunities through the Sutter-Butte Flood Control Agency was a $50 million funding that is in a what's called New Start project through the Army Corps of Engineers. And this is about a three-year effort to be able to come up with this funding. How does this funding come up? It comes up through efforts made back in Washington DC by members of, whether it be the Sutter-Butte Flood Control Agency, council members, or whoever is back advocating in Washington DC in the halls of Congress to be able to come up with the money. How is it done? This is a first-time effort ever where the Army Corps of Engineers potentially is going to turn their project over to a local jurisdiction or to Sutter-Butte Flood Control, who has proven that they can do these projects cheaper, faster, and more efficiently than the Army Corps of Engineers can do. Why did this come about? Well, let me share with you just my takeaway from this. There's public information out there about how much it costs for a council member or a member of Sutter-Butte Flood Control to be able to go back to Washington DC to advocate. There's been false information put out that it costs $6,000 a person to be able to go. That's not true. What the truth is, it's between $3,700 and about $4,500, depending on the duration that you're back there and working with members of Congress, the Office of Budget and Management and Budget back in Washington DC. All of the different entities with Army Corps, with NOAA, with Federal Fish and Game, all of the other components that it takes to get this moved forward, it takes time. It takes advocacy and it takes dedication to being able to do it. So when we look at what the cost is and they're receiving a $50 million to the southern reaches of the Sutter Basin, which also controls floodwaters back into the southern portion of Yuba City, this is a strategic piece of funding that will improve public safety throughout our area. So don't be swayed by misleading information. There are times where it costs a little bit of money to be able to move forward and to be able to advocate and move funding into a channel that is the most efficient way to be able to get the job done. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Next, we have councilmember Cordoza.
Okay. We'll start off with meetings this week. We attended a special joint meetings with our board and commissioners last week. We had all our groups all get together. We all talked and got a game plan for the future through the mayor here. Attended the Sutter-Butte Flood Control Agency Board Meeting, the Gilizer Drainage Board Meeting, and our Planning Commission Meeting. For city events, we had a busy couple of weeks. Starting off, I attended the swearing-in of, we have three brand-new police officers. Tamara Leith, Winston Noon, and Stefan Bisland. Attended the Summer City Hall Introductions and this evening's events with the students that we have in our audience. We attended a ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago for the South Side Park. We upgraded. We have brand-new playground equipment. We had ribbon cutting by the mayor. Also attended the River Valley and Yuba City High School graduation ceremony. Attended the opening of the Sutter Theater Gallery Art Exhibit. Vice mayor and I attended the Dinner Theater at the museum. Like Vice Mayor was saying earlier, people say there's nothing to do in this community that if you have something you wanted, or not, I didn't mean it that way. Wait a minute. I said that wrong. There's, how do I say it? I'll let you finish it off here. I went off wrong. Anyway, it was a wonderful time, a wonderful time. Great time, great actors, wonderful dinner. I'll let the vice mayor help me on that one when he's up. Attended the Flag Day at Oakview Insurance. You could cash, you could turn in your old flags and get brand-new ones. Attended the Valley Muffler Annual Car Show for the Write-Out Cancer Center. All proceeds went to it. Attended the Summer Stroll, and I entered into the hot wings eating competition. And I got lucky, I won it this year. Paid for it dearly, but it was a fun time. Attended the weekly farmer's market at our fountain. Went to the dedication with Sutter Buttes with council. And then last but not least, for chamber events the last couple of weeks, we had a Chamber Ambassador Social last night. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you very much. It has been a relatively busy time, especially with the exciting graduations for the previous seniors. And I know we have incoming seniors and juniors out here mostly right now. So next year at this time, you'll be in the celebration of all this. Anticipation, yeah. Hopefully he says. He's the comedian, by the way. Started off with, let's see, the Yuba City graduation I went to. Then I have had some family health emergencies that kind of cut me out of a lot of things that I could have volunteered to go to the last couple of weeks. But I did attend the ribbon cutting at the South Side Park, which is Wilbur Park. They've redone that, and the kids there are absolutely ecstatic at the changes and the stuff that's been done there. They just, it's hard to get them off the stuff at night now. They enjoy it so much. Of course, the introductions, Summer City Hall. I was here for that on Monday morning. Then moving on to the special workshop that was mentioned, we had the boards and commissions get together and just discuss how we could interact a little bit more, how we can, they could actually promote themselves a little bit more in the community and try to get out there and let people know what they actually do and talk it up and let people know. Also, Sutter-Butte Flood Control Agency meeting. Councilman Buckland did mention some of that. He did a good job. Been on that now for, almost since its beginning, been involved in 2007. And the fact that we have achieved what we had was we were told when we first really went after it and had a plan, that we would never get this done by many different people. We wouldn't be able to accomplish it because it's the policies and procedures that are out there at federal level and the state don't match. And so that it would be nearly impossible for us to get it done. And here we are with an over $300 million project now going with another 50 and other projects in the future being done and celebrated on the 9th at the Shanghai Park. And then, of course, out on the riverside of it. It was phenomenal. What an accomplishment. The team, there was hundreds of us, literally, working in different ways in the community, electeds, appointeds, state level. We even had congress members lobbying in Washington DC to make sure that this would be accomplished. And to their credit, the Corps of Engineers have believed us. They've given us the opportunity to be the best partners they've ever had on a project. And we have, in this community, and the politicians and the people, have proven ourselves to be trustworthy. And that's a hard thing for federal government to concede to. And it's literally a miracle what they're doing. But it's all because we, as a community and leadership, have been faithful, done what we said we were going to do, and under budget, without throwing stones at the ones that have a tendency to go over budget. We have been great partners for them and we're thankful that they recognize us for that and thank the community and the ones involved for helping us to make this happen. With that, I was a mosquito vector. You guys know what mosquitoes are. We actually have a group that goes out and sprays out in the fields and stuff mosquitoes for that. And they also have what's called little mosquito fish, which they raise tens of millions of these little mosquito fish every year and put them in ponds, streams, little canals, little places where, you know, even in pools that people leave unattended. Well, there's still water in them. They'll go put these fish in there to kill the mosquitoes. And I have noticed this year that there's a very low count of mosquitoes, which I am very thankful for. I've had one bite this year, and I've been outside a lot. With that, I'm done.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Vice Mayor Harris.
All right, a lot of the events have already been mentioned, so I won't belabor those points. However, I did want to, one thing I was going to mention about the graduations is right on point with Councilmember Buckland, is our young people who are off to the military. I tell you, one thing that's, especially if you folks, it's foreign to you, is that these, but when I was your age, it was a concern, but these folks are joining our military during wartime. That's a big deal because they could be, leave boot camp and they're off to who knows where, in harm's way. I think that is very, I got goosebumps thinking about it. That's very admirable, and one thing I was proud to be a part of was the community-wide standing ovation when we announced those folks. That was just beautiful. And I just, I can't, I can't respect them anymore, so good for them. Same thing with the scholarships, John, since you mentioned it, that's a lot of work and that's a lot of money here investing in our young people, and they worked hard for it and they earned it, and I wish them the very best. Just as far as events go, I spent some time in Texas, shocker, grandkids out that way. I managed to kidnap one and bring back one back with me. I haven't got a call yet, so I haven't noticed, but. The Army Corps, I did attend a Sabuca dedication down there, and much like was already said, they are, it's unprecedented that they're going to trust a local agency and local folks to do work that they would normally be in charge of because they really held their power and their authority close to their vest for a long time. Big deal. And one of the reasons, one of the many reasons why that is the case is because relationships we've built. We sit, Councilmember Buckland and I sat and had a good conversation with a colonel in the army, and those relationships that are built, many of which began on our trip to Washington DC. You're sitting in an informal setting, and that is why we were there, and a couple three-thousand dollars a person translated in one example, fifty million dollars we would not have really had. So I think that's a good example of a good investment in return. So I won't go on any further. It's been busy two weeks, always is, the calendar's full. We're out there representing our city, representing our folks, meeting people, and I think we're in a really positive momentum right now, and I'm happy about that. So, thank you very much. Okay, the museum thing? I wasn't going to mention it because it wasn't part of our council stuff while we were there, just friends inviting me to go with them, and so I, okay, I'll go try to solve the murder mystery. But a comment was made that, you know, some folks you hear out and about that there's nothing to do in Yuba City. I can understand perhaps we have some room to improve for the thirteen, fourteen, the teenage group, perhaps, but there's some good opportunity over on, oh, what's the name of the street? I'm trying to make a reference to Millennium Kart Racing. There's a few things out there, also Gold Rush Billiards, but this is not a commercial for our businesses. However, if you are over twenty-one and you don't know how to read the newspaper or something and you say there's nothing to do in Yuba City, you got a problem because there is so much, so much to do almost every weekend. It's a good place to be, so thank you for that.
Thank you for helping me.
All right, well, speaking of things to do, our youth commission has put together some amazing events for participation, so, you know, go and check those out. They have a whole list of things they're going to be doing this year as well. Speaking of youth commission, so we had our joint commission meeting, and that's bringing all of our commissioners that are appointed through the city council. This was the first time that we've done this, but the concern came while we were interviewing is that goals and priorities weren't really channeled down to all of the commissions, so they don't know what the overall arching goals of the city are. So it was really important to give them that overview so that they can go out and set up their own strategic plans and then put together some tactical plans to implement in order to reach those goals. So the feedback that we've received is that it was a great way to get that information out, and they really enjoyed it, and they hope to see future ones with those. So we will continue with that later on. As far as graduations and scholarships, I, you know, duplicate the information, just phenomenal. Graduations are fun, I enjoy it, and, you know, rooting all the kids going on with their futures. Scholarships, just want to say that my daughter graduated last year. She is back, accomplished her first year in college. And speaking of scholarships, she was one of those recipients that received ninety-six thousand dollars to attend. So you students, you guys are getting ready to get some applications in there, don't overlook those scholarships. They are out there, your counselors, the folks in the school have all of that information. Reach out, the money is out there, and you can get a lot. So you can talk to Arianna, I'm sure, during your program to get more information as well. But congratulations to all of the graduates and, you know, new endeavors and new journeys, so go get it. Levy dedication, we were all present, wonderful to see that actually happen. Let's see, what else? South Side Park, that was a great time. I had little kids like hugging my leg, and I have no idea who they were, but it was, they were so excited to. Yeah, I pretty much wanted to take a few of them home, you know, kidnap them, they were just so cute. But yeah, oh my God, they were, they were running around that merry-go-round and down the slides and up and down the swings as some of our youth commission folks were there as well, but a lot of fun. As far as any other thing, I just want to mention, since our students are here, these are Summer at City Hall students who went through an application process, went through the interview. They have been, oh my gosh, overwhelming in this program with so many ideas and concepts that they are going to talk about next week during their mock city council meeting. So for those of you who don't know, their mock city council meeting is open to the public. Let's support them. It is Thursday at two o'clock in the afternoon. They will present their projects and things that they have been working on as a mock city council meeting, so they'll have their staff reports and so forth. So we're really excited, they're excited, I think a little nervous as well, but I'm sure the jitters will go away eventually. But right following after the mock city council will also be their graduation where they will get their certifications, they will also get their credit for being in this program. So come and join and support them. They've been working really hard this week, and they will continue this following week and present, so excited for you guys. Next week also, we, I will be at the mayor's, annual mayor's conference, and there, the reason I am going is because I am sitting on a panel on engaging youth. And so we are actually representing our very own program so that other cities can build around it. So it's been set as an example across, so yes, we are building, so you guys will be out there, you know, being represented for what you guys are doing. So congratulations on that. With that being said, I don't have anything else, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.